... meeting of the planning board and township, right, Leonard? Has been provided.
Here we go.
They're on? They're on. Okay, thank you. I guess we can pledge allegiance first.
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Healy, call the roll, please.
Sure. Chairman, Councilman Chase?
Here.
Robert La Court?
Here.
Seal McGyver, absent. Robert Mettler?
Here.
James Pettit?
Here.
Carl Hauck?
Here.
Robert Thomas, absent. Edward Fataznik had indicated previously that he wouldn't be here. Charles Oniaka, absent. And Chairman Orsini as well had indicated ahead of time that he would be absent.
Okay, let's take care of the vouchers first for Martin Murphy, April and May retainers.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we pay the vouchers for Martin Murphy.
Vows seconded.
It's been moved to seconded. Hold the board, please. Or do we do that by acclamation? Either way.
I think we do that just.
I think any time. Do we? I think we vote because we're spending money.
Yeah. We have the sheets here, so. Uh, Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Robert La Court?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Okay, we have minutes for the regular meeting of March 5th, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the minutes for March 5th, 2014.
Seconded.
Any comments or anything?
Oh, there was one place where it said 1,009 and should've said 2,009.
You remember where it was, Ted? Well, just. What, was referring to a pass approval or something?
Yeah.
All right, we'll search for that and find it.
Maybe it was in the resolutions.
Got it. Yep.
All right, subject to the chair, you found it?
Yep.
Okay.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Robert La Court?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
We have the resolutions for 800 Cotton Tail Pro Builders and Frank Greek Development.
We should do each of those separately?
Yes, we're going to do them separately. Just wanted to. My copies.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would move the resolution for 800 Cotton Tail Lane PL 1300017.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Robert La Court?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the resolution for Builders Pro LLC PLN 14, resolution number PLN 1400002.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hold the board.
Robert La Court?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would move a resolution PLN 140001F Greek Development.
Any discussion? Hold the board.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
All right, the next item is our, I guess, our hearing. J. Jack Gennaro LLC PLN 1400004. Site plan for addition at 4587 Route 727 in Kingston.
Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an, excuse me, this is an application for the expansion of an existing building at 4587 Route 27 in Kingston. It's block three, lot 17. The subject property is 4,968 square feet. The lot is an undersized lot in the general, I'm sorry, in the neighborhood business zone which permits the proposed use. There are numerous existing variances that affect the subject property. The only variances that are being created as a result of this application are the side yard and a total of two side yards. The building already has a side yard variance. The building already has a variance for the total of two side yards, but by extending the building further back, those variances are exacerbated. The other variance is for parking. The building has no parking currently. We are not proposing any parking and will present some testimony on our operation and the availability of street parking with respect to the application. I do have three witnesses that I intend to call this evening. They should all be fairly brief. The owner of the property will testify first, and I have the architect to describe the changes to the building and the site engineer. With that introduction, I would like to call as my first witness, Mr. Costable. Good evening.
Want to raise your right hand, sir? Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth? Your name and address, please.
My name is Gennaro Costabile. Just hold it up. Can I use yours? My name is Gennaro Costabile. I live in Kingston, 36 Union Street.
Mr. Costable, you, no, you can keep it. Speak into it. You own the property in question?
I do.
And when did you buy the property?
Around August of, August 13th of 2013.
And you indicated you live on Union Street in Kingston?
Correct.
And how far is that from the subject property?
About two and a half blocks.
Okay, and how long have you resided there?
Twenty-two years.
Okay, and at the present time, what is your occupation?
I own and manage a restaurant in Princeton.
And what's the name of that restaurant?
It's Gennaro's Restaurant on State Street.
Okay, and that is a fine dining restaurant?
That is a fine dining establishment. It's considered so, yes.
Okay, and you purchased this property, you said, last August. When did you become familiar with this property?
I've known this property since I've lived in Kingston. As a matter of fact, my wife used to work there when it was a flower shop.
Okay, and you recall what other uses were in the property?
Before the flower shop, I believe it was a gift shop, and then after the flower shop, there was another gift shop.
Excuse me, sir, can I interrupt you for one minute?
Yes.
Mr. Oniaka's around.
Yeah. Mr. Oniaka just showed up in the beginning of the testimony, so I assume it's, you have no objection to him voting on the matter?
I do not.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right, Mr. Pettit, thank you. Okay, and so the property's been used as a retail establishment for, as long as you've known the property.
Since I can remember, yes.
And when you purchased the property and as a result of this application, what is your intention with respect to the property?
To open up a deli.
Okay, and this would be a?
Well, it's more an Italian market, you know.
Okay, and this is an addition, you'll still retain the restaurant in Princeton?
Yes.
Okay, and this will be a delicatessen, and what are the hours of operation?
Eight o'clock in the morning until six o'clock in the evening.
Okay, and how many employees do you envision working at the establishment?
Two to three, the most.
Okay, and can you indicate in your projections as far as the operation, what kind of food you intend to sell and how do you intend to market the facility?
Well, the food is going to be packaged product that public can come in and take out.
Okay. So it's primarily a takeout and also do you provide catering also as part of your business?
I do.
Okay, and obviously in order to run this establishment, you need to have a kitchen?
Correct.
And in order to have a kitchen, we need the expansion of the building, is that correct?
That would be great, yes.
Okay, now, having been, you know, familiar with the subject property, there is no parking obviously on your property, is that correct?
There is none.
Is there street parking available along Route 27, both on your side of the street and on the other side of the street in South Brunswick?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and having visited the property over the years and more recently on numerous occasions since you bought the property, have you ever seen where all of the parking spaces are taken on the street?
No, I should be ashamed that I take my car there because it's only two and a half blocks away, but I never had a problem parking.
So there's adequate street parking for your customers?
I believe so.
And basically, your operation is for customers to come in and pick up whatever the, either the prepared foods or prepackaged foods and then leave the premises?
Correct, yes.
Okay, on the plans that were prepared by the architect, which he will testify to shortly, there are a couple tables that are shown on the plans, is that correct?
Yes.
And are you going to provide waitress service or are people going to sit there and eat or anything like that?
No, none of that. It's going to be just casual sitting, somebody wants to eat a sandwich there or just waiting for the order to get ready.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions of this witness.
Excuse me, I missed, Mr. Oniaka showed up. What were the prior uses of the property, the flower shop and what were the other ones?
It was a barber shop at one time and it was a gift shop on more than one occasion.
It had never been a sandwich shop or a deli?
It'd never been, yeah.
Thank you.
A few questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
So a total of eight seats, is that correct? Or is there more, I see eight set seats, is there a counter for customers to eat at? Or is that more?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay, so it is a total of eight seats?
Eight seats, totally, yes.
Four, basically four, two tops?
Four tables of two, yes.
Okay, and the three employees, could you describe, you know, how many would be in the front selling to customers, how many would be in the back preparing food?
It would depend, but most of the time, I would envision two people in the front.
Two people in front. Okay, so, I mean, it's a pretty, I look at, it seems to be a relatively large kitchen. You just see one person in the back using that entire kitchen?
In, as far as, generally speaking, two, in the front, one in the kitchen, but in the morning when we would prepare to take, do caterings, then the three people would be in the kitchen, obviously.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I just see a convection oven, a fryer?
Right.
Charbroil, two six burner ranges?
So we have, at this moment, in my kitchen in Princeton, I have three people employed, and we serve an average of in between 60 people and 150 people.
Okay, so you're basically going to prepare, the employees are going to prepare it in the back, and then you put it in the counter space and the deli cases, et cetera?
Right.
Okay.
So, for example, if we prepare a catering for 200 people, then we will not prepare everything in once, but the one or two people will prepare gradually until everything is ready to go. And then it's not going to take, you know, the four or five people to prepare that because that person will prepare slowly everything until it's done.
And I'm assuming, are you going to, a menu, people can come in and order sandwiches?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to get a flavor of the operation.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a few questions, if I may. How many employees did you say you have? Three?
About two or three people.
Where will they be parking?
Well, there is a parking on the side of the roads, you know, not too far from the place.
I use the area quite often.
Okay.
I don't want to get into an argument with you.
Sure.
I know at lunchtime, you can't park. There's no place to park. I meet a friend at that corner, that corner shop, they have some parking, none of it, of course, is legal, and there's no, there's not a space to be had during the lunch hour.
Right.
So that's what's your busy time. I mean, and how do you get deliveries and how do you, when you're doing catering, how do you ship the material out? Where do those trucks line up?
Well, usually the caterings are in the morning, in the morning.
Where do the trucks go to pick up the material to take to wherever you're taking it?
That's a good question. That's a good question, you know, the catering service is going to be taken from the place, you know, obviously, there is times that, you know, I agree with you, that it's very busy, and sometime I park across the street, which is, you know, a parking across the street, which is not as used as this side of the road, you know, so.
Yeah, because there's less of those kind of establishments on the side of the street.
Correct, right, right.
No, I'm just curious, is how, you're going to have a freezer box in the back, that's for your supplies, as far as your addition.
Correct.
But now you've got a job, you've made up, wherever you need to make up for the catering commission that you have, and you have to ship that to wherever it's going to go. So do the trucks park in front of your place or, I don't see the guys, you're going to be walking across the street with the material that would in trucks?
No, no, no.
How do you ship that?
That's correct, you know, the parking, you know, would be utilized, you know, wherever we can find, I guess we're going to have to wait until somebody moves until we can get in.
Well, I see you do it really early in the morning, you know.
Right.
Saying you're open from eight to six at night, eight in the morning till six at night.
Correct, yeah.
I don't think you indicated, but let me just clarify, when you do have a catering obligation, you have your own truck?
That's correct, yes.
Actually, you have more than one truck.
Right.
So it would be your trucks that would come to pick up the stuff that you?
Yeah, well, it's only a question, it could be a semi-trailer, I mean, what it is, where are they going to park to do that?
Yeah, but.
It's got to load.
I understand, but again, it's a little bit different.
And there's no on-site parking?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Now, but there's a difference, if it was, you know, people coming to pick up, it would be more cumbersome, but, you know, he can control whenever his trucks come and whenever they leave, obviously.
If I may add to that, you know, there is deliveries that other businesses in the area get, you know, in the morning, like bread delivery and?
Witnessed that, actually.
Right, right.
That one place on the corner and the one next to it, they have, at least they have a driveway.
Right.
They go in the back, but then you can't park at all, so it's like, deliveries as the.
I've observed, you know, trucks that come and deliver and they park, you know, they get their hand truck and they walk in.
I've been there too often, I guess, I've seen a lot of it.
Right.
The parking is the only issue I can think of.
It is, yeah.
An issue, and it would not be an issue, of course, since you're expanding the building, it brings it into, you know, it brings it into a, it brings it into view, it's a consideration.
Actually, if they, if they weren't expanding, they wouldn't be before this board.
No, I know, I'm just saying, that's what brings it up.
It'd be a change, it would be a change of use, one retail replacing another, but they're expanding and that creates the variance.
But also the other issue is obviously today with the requirements of kitchens and whatever you have to put in them, you need more room than this rather modest business.
Not arguing about that part.
Right.
I don't see particularly anything wrong with the operation or what it is.
Yeah.
The main concern is you have customers and you have shipment and you have delivery of material. You have food coming in, which I guess now is going to be carted through the kitchen, through the restaurant area or the sitting area, and into the icebox, or you can't go around the back, there's no way to get to the back.
There is a side door, but basically deliveries are coming in through the building.
Well, that's all about humans.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to get to the back.
It's, uh.
Well, we're going to be in more a neighborhood place that people walk to the, hopefully people will walk to that, you know, just like they walk to the post office and.
I don't know what the clientele is that uses the area during lunchtime, I just know it's, there's a lot of people, so it should work out all right.
I know, I have all my neighbors knocking on my door, "When are you opening?"
Oh, no, they're fine, they're not going to drive up, they're not going to drive up.
Also, also the, because of regulation, we had to put this humongous bathroom, you know, I was asking my architect, why do we have to build this big?
Oh, the hand, you borrow your free.
So that took a lot of room away from the existing space.
Only one or two?
It's only one.
Only one?
Only one.
Let's break in that respect. It's big enough so you could rent it out for a hole, I know what you're talking about. Excuse me, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have no further questions.
Is there any chance that you could arrange for your employees to park at the back of the pinned parking lot, since they have a large lot and I don't think they fill it?
My client knows the owners, I've actually done some work for them, I can ask if they would be amenable. I would imagine the pinned, most of their client, or most of their business is actually in the evening, more than at lunchtime. I can make that inquiry. We haven't done so, but I can make that inquiry.
Yeah, I think that's a very good suggestion, because you have, obviously the employees have to park somewhere, and they're only going to be taking customer spaces away from your business, frankly.
No doubts, you know, priority that employees will not be parking in the front of the establishment.
Move to my next witness?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzmic?
Raise your right hand, sir. Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Yes. Your name and? My name is Jeffrey W. Kuzmic. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
That should be sufficient, Mr. Pettit. Yes, I do accept. That's a nice person.
Mr. Kuzmic, have you prepared a board?
That's okay.
Concerning the proposed project or multiple boards?
Yes, I did.
Okay, maybe we should mark them all, I guess.
I'll start with A04.
Mr. Chairman, what I have done is marked the exhibits that he will be relying upon A1 through A5. All of them are in the plan set, which were part of the submission, which should be documents that you have in front of you this evening. The only difference being one of the, one of the plan set, which I've marked as A3, has been colored by Mr. Kuzmic. Your plan set is black and white. Other than that, they are identical to the plan set, is that correct, Mr. Kuzmic?
Yes, it is.
All right, and Mr. Kuzmic, you've presented these plans twice previously to the historic commission in Franklin Township, is that correct?
Yes, the first, the first time was for modification, or not modifications, but alterations to the existing plan, and then the second presentation was with the addition.
Okay, and the plans that we are presenting to the board this evening are the plans that were presented to the historic commission?
That is correct.
Okay, first of all, can you indicate to the board the existing condition of the building?
Well, the existing condition of the building is right now, it's in, it's somewhat dis-repaired, the inside has been gutted and because there is now ongoing construction going on, that was part of the first application to the historic commission and also to obtain a building permit to do modifications and alterations to the foundation and the interior.
Okay, and?
Excuse me, that's already started?
That is correct.
And that was based on what?
That was just strictly interior and structural repair, no expansion.
Okay, just interior, okay.
Correct.
And what was the condition of the building when you first saw it?
It was, it's an older, it obviously was, it's an old building, it's, uses older traditional two-by-four framing, it's somewhat, it had a rubble foundation in the front, the front porch area was more recent construction, it had a sill beam and bearing studs and a dirt floor underneath, well, dirt underneath the floor joists.
And in looking at the building, was it, you indicated it was built in stages?
It was, yeah, it was, the front part is more recent, that is the one where it is a, it has a hip roof and it's juts out about seven feet, then the original part of the building goes back probably about 26 feet, and then there's a third addition, which was constructed of concrete block and with a shed roof.
And what is the overall size of the existing building?
The overall size is approximately about 45 feet plus another, about another five-foot extension of a shed type roof.
So it's 45 feet deep and how wide is it?
It is 21 feet, three and a half, three and a half inches, 21 feet four.
All right, and in discussing with the applicant, the use of the property or the building for a delicatessen and for food preparation, could it be done in the existing building? Could it have been done in the existing building?
No, the problem that we had with the rear portion of the structure, which was the concrete block portion, had a very low shed roof, which made it difficult or almost impossible to obtain or put in a commercial kitchen exhaust hood for the cook line on the kitchen.
Okay, so part of this application is actually a demo of the existing building and the addition of additional kitchen space, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, can you indicate to the board how you laid out the proposed building?
First, I'm just going to go through, walk the board through drawing A04.
Before you go on, that drawing A3?
That is A0, A-04.
Four, all right, okay, thank you. It's different, it's a different layout, you changed.
It's the existing.
You rotated, you rotated the buildings, right? These are different than.
I would like to say that the site engineer rotated the building.
No, I mean, A4 here, which shows the restaurant, and that doesn't look at all like that drawing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Take a look at these for a minute.
Yeah, no, that's the, you are correct, that's the A4 which had the addition, this was the A4 that I presented to the historic commission, which was part of the.
Oh, this is the other approval?
This is the other approval, but it puts it in context for the board, which shows the existing conditions of the old structure that we're going to modify.
Okay, got you, thank you.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, I was, I'm looking at plans that didn't match what you're talking about.
All right, I'm going to then just move to the A4 and, which shows the addition. So drawing A0, A-04 is dated February 10th, 2014, it's been marked and identified as exhibit A2. All right, this shows the proposed interior renovation and alteration to the front part of the existing structure, which pretty much ends at column line B, about the midpoint of the structure, that's where we were proposing to remove the old concrete block portion of the structure in the back and put in a new slab engraved and wood frame structure that would really just extrude the existing design and existing massing of the building further back. So the front part of the building from column lines A to B are pretty much the retail portion of the, of the, of the deli, which would have three deli cases up in the front, a small sales counter, a back counter, and then refrigerated cases on the opposite side of the wall, opposite the deli cases, along with shelving for merchandise and product. As the client had testified, we are showing two, four deuce tables for a total of eight, just small miscellaneous seating. In the middle of the structure, we're showing a small office and a handicap accessible bathroom. Beyond that is the new kitchen, which is in part of, is part of the new structure, and it shows approximately a 17-foot cook line, chef's table, dishwashing and pot washing, a mixer, prep sink and a hand sink, and another little small area further back, which has a mop sink, dunnage area for storage, and then further back to that is where we appended a walk-in box, which has an interior freezer.
Okay, now, the addition will be the same width as the existing building, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're not making the building any wider or moving it any closer to the adjoining property lines?
No, we're not.
Okay. And the materials exteriorly, what will the building look like?
What we proposed to the Historic Commission and what they approved, showing you Exhibit A-06, which is the colored rendering of the existing building as we had presented to the first meeting with the Historic Committee. It's marked and identified as A-03. The proposed materials are a synthetic stucco or a masonry stucco with a, kind of a cultured stone base, which would be in earth-toned colors that the client had not selected, but we presented to the Historic Commission and they were, I think, we had said that we would go back to the committee on final selection of the material and the colors.
If you're looking at the front of the building today and we look at the front of the building after the renovations, are there any changes to the appearance at the, at the front of the building?
There'll just be a minor change, or there'll be primarily two changes. The Historic Committee asked us to put in some natural cedar clapboard siding in the gabled end portion of it right now. I believe it is T111 vertical siding. So they asked us to get it more into historical character to make that change. We accommodated their request. The second change is that we were adding a pocketed door to allow the door to swing out and create a little bit of a cover. We're recessing that door with two side lights, approximately three feet.
Okay. And as you go to, along the side of the building facing the pinned restaurant, what will that look, what will that look like?
Uh, I'm gonna point to Exhibit A-4. It is drawing A-06 dated February 10th, 2014. It depicts the addition along the restaurant side of the property and it is a continuation of the similar materials that the existing building has, similar roof line and ridge line. And there'll be no windows along that, along that elevation, except for one egress door in the back.
And can you indicate to the board, and you've been to the property on more than one occasion, what is, as we know, there is a restaurant next to us. What is between us and, and what does that restaurant have on that side of the property?
Uh, the restaurant on that side of the property, there is a fence running all along the property, which is depicted on the engineering site plan. And then there is a lot of wooded buffer between the property line and the pinned restaurant building.
Okay. And is the pinned restaurant dumpster area also back in that corner of the property?
I believe so, but I don't know the exact location. It's not along the side, but it is a little further back behind the structure in the parking area.
Okay. And then on the other side of the property, there is a mixed use. There is a previously approved use for an office on the lower level and apartment on the upper, upper level?
That is correct. It's a two-story or two-and-a-half-story residential type frame structure whereby there is a commercial, I believe, office use on the ground floor and apartment up above.
Okay. And what will the building, our addition, look like on that side?
On that side of the property, I point to drawing A-07, which has been marked and identified as A-5. It's dated February 10th, 2014. Similar to the opposite side, it is a continuation of the structure along that property line. The base coursing will be extended, the eve lines will be extended, the ridge line wall will be extended. There'll be no windows on that side of the property.
So there will be no light emanating from the building on that side of the property?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Any members of the board have questions? One question, Mr. Chairman. Signage. Are you going to accommodate signage on the site or the building?
Uh, the client is proposing to put some signage, although I do not believe it's part of this application, but he does intend to present it for application. But, again, defer to Mr. Lanfray.
Yeah. Basically, when we went to the Historic Commission, and I'll, I'll mark this, what was my last witness, Captain?
A5.
A5. I will mark this, A60 photograph of the existing building. I believe Mark, you were there, but I'm not sure, the Historic...
No, I was not.
Right?
At Historic?
Yeah.
No, I was not.
Okay. There is an awning, and I'll pass this around, in front of the building. We were going to basically replace the awning, but basically put the name of the establishment there.
Okay.
If we want to do anything else, we haven't decided, but we would come back and either propose additional signing, either A, in conformance with the ordinance, or B, have to go to this board and Historic for approval.
The reason I ask is that you're doing the architectural in the front.
Right.
And obviously, you want to accommodate appropriately for where you're gonna put the sign, but it sounds like that's, you're gonna put it on the awning.
We're gonna put it on the awning. And there may be an opportunity to put some additional signage. We're not sure yet, but whatever we do, we're gonna go through the appropriate channels.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll give this to you and then you can pass it around.
And also, I just want to point out that that photo also depicts a, a pole-type sign, previous sign, that does extend off the roof line of the lower portion in the front out. And I believe that the client is looking to do some sort of banner sign that was previously there, along with replacing the awning in the front, which is depicted on the drawings, where it does have some signage on the fabric awning.
Okay. And that'll be, you'll have to go through the appropriate...
We'll, we'll start with you and Mr. Dominack and then proceed to where we have to go. It may be that certain signage, we may have, be able to do as of right, and other, we may have to go to Historic plus the board, but we will deal with that as we go on.
All right.
I have a question, FMA.
Sure.
You talked about your neighbor, his dumpster location. Where is your disposal and your recycling and all that gonna go?
Well, right now...
How's it gonna be handled?
Uh, right now, the plan shows, which was marked and identified as A-2. We do show some interior trash. Right now, we haven't really determined what the trash and recycling needs are, but it is anticipated that if we need to expand some of the, we would use wheeled containers.
And it'll be taken out through the front door?
No, it would be taken out alongside the building.
How do they get picked up? There's no space. You're only two and a half feet off the property line.
Well, there is, on the other side, there is at least three feet to the property line. But right now...
Three feet is...
Well, right now, they're the same, it's the same issue that the existing structure...
I know the issue. I just wanna know what you're thinking about it. How are you gonna handle it?
I think that's pretty much how it would be handled. It would be taken alongside the, the side yard. I mean, right now, there is a paved area that's there that does encroach somewhat onto the, but it's been used, it's been previously used by that building owner.
Which building owner?
Uh, the one that we're presenting.
But it wasn't a restaurant before. This is, this is a different use.
I understand.
And I, and it's no room, there's no room to get rid of, unless you take it out the front door and put the garbage truck.
First, I want to clarify...
It'd be stolen houses.
First, I want to just clarify for the board, this is not a restaurant use. This is a over-the-counter business use, which is the previous business...
Food service use. Is that better?
It's classified under the Uniform Construction Code as a, as a business over, takeout, over-the-counter business use.
Whatever it is.
Well...
It generates garbage, generates trash.
Yes.
And it has recycling for all the packaging. Where is it going and how are you getting rid of it? That's a simple question.
Yeah. As, as I said, if, it'll be taken out alongside...
The answer is that it's simple to make it.
Excuse me?
The answer is not as simple as you're attempting to make it. Where is it gonna go?
It would be, if it needs to be additional trash recycling bins in the back, it would be put towards the rear of the structure and taken out alongside the building.
When we go to single-stream recycling, which is predicted to happen this summer, at least every residence will have a 96-gallon recycling container, and you will probably have one too. And you'll just have to bring it up to the street on Friday morning when the pickup occurs.
Is there way to do that?
Would be commercial garbage pickup, but presumably you'd have a similar container that you would similarly bring up to the street.
Or multiple containers.
Or multiple.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, Mr. Pettit, we're not envisioning keeping a dumpster back. They were keeping garbage cans back there.
No, I understand that. I understand. But you just gotta get them out to the truck.
Right.
And there's no room for the guy to come back and get them. That's all I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah.
How are you gonna get them to the guy that's gonna pick them up?
I'm sorry. Main, Main Street Cafe has the same issues. They are a restaurant and do have, they do have multiple cans in the back, which they bring out when it's time.
They bring them out?
Yes.
That's what you're gonna do?
Oh, yes.
All right, fine. So it'll be in that little room we have all the trash, show them. Take them out of there and bring them up front. All right, fine. Thank you. So they'll pick them up off the street. Garbage man will come down the street, pick them up like they do in my ass. And I have one of those giants, whatever you call them.
You may have two of those.
Okay, thanks.
Well, my engineer, Mr. Nacera.
I want to raise your right hand, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? And you, your name is?
My name is, hang on. My name is Brian Gillan. I'm a professional engineer, 30 years in New Jersey.
Licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Licensed in the state of New Jersey.
I find him acceptable.
Um, like, as I said, 30 years, it feels like 100 years.
Mr. Gillan, you prepared the site plan, which is the subject of this application?
That's correct.
Okay. And basically, you've heard the testimony of both the applicant and the architect concerning the existing conditions. And we basically have a site where we have an existing building, which is out to the property line and some, what's behind the building at the present time?
Uh, behind the building, it's undeveloped with grass and I would say about 14 or 15 trees, small caliper. And that would be the best way to describe it.
Okay. Now, the proposed renovations to the property really don't involve massive engineering changes to the property, because there's not very much we can do to the property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's start with the front of the building. Are there gonna be any changes to the front of the building that we are proposing?
In the front of the building, we're putting in a sidewalk that's handicap accessible, you know, with curb cuts going at the end of the sidewalk to the, going down Route 27. And then we, we're, we're basically removing some existing pavement by the side of the property. We're repaving that, bringing it back to the rear of the property. And then we're putting a, a small curb cut, a concrete area for the walk-in facility at, at the back of the property.
Okay. At the front of the property, we do have to encroach within the DOT right away to put the new handicap accessible access to the building, correct?
That's correct.
And we will need a permit from DOT to do that?
That's correct.
Okay. As you're at the front of the building, is there in fact a grass area between the sidewalk and the curb line of Route 27?
There are some small grassed areas.
Okay, and that's gonna remain. We're not gonna blacktop, or put concrete there. Whatever grass area is between the existing curb line and the sidewalk will remain.
That's correct.
And then, other than putting in the, the concrete for the walk-in box, there are no changes being proposed to the site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, have you had an opportunity to review the engineering report that was generated in conjunction with this application?
Yes.
Okay. And discussed it the other day. The, in, in comment number three, there was a request to put a street tree in front of the property. Can, can that be accommodated?
That can be accommodated.
Okay, so you will do that. There's also a, and I, I'll, I'd like to deal with number four. We talked about some existing pavement that, right now, extends over our property line onto Lot 5.01, that, which is the restaurant property. That's there, that's always been there. I don't think we necessarily need to remove it. I don't think it's, the township's concerned whether it stays or doesn't stay, or whether we have an easement or don't have an easement. So we would respectfully request that we not be required to deal with item number four of that report.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, I see that wooden fence that runs along the, whatever that line is that it runs along, it's not your property, line nor theirs. Is that where that pavement is between that fence and your property?
The wooden fence, the wooden fence was put up by Good Time Charlie's as a result of one of their applications. Between the wooden fence and our property line, there is some pavement. Wooden fence at, at that restaurant doesn't run along the property line.
No, I realize that.
Yeah.
Are you, were prior owners able to use that paved area?
I would assume, it's been there for as long as we know, yeah.
Well, then, some of the questions we've been asking are probably addressing themselves.
Yes.
If that, it would, I think it should be for his protection.
Yeah.
Some kind of caveat, something to, that he can continue to use it. You know, if somebody gets upset with them, then they can't use it. If, it's been being used like by, what's the proper legal term?
Adverse possession.
Adverse possession, yeah.
We, we may have, we may have some rights in that driveway because of, or that fault, because of prior usage. My position is that's between my client and the adjoining property.
No, I'm, I'm saying to you, maybe it would be inappropriate for us to ask you to remove it. That's all. Leave it there if it's working, but still try to get, get something in writing that agrees to let you use it.
It, it would be nice and...
And then you have the, then the question of getting your garbage out and servicing that, and even bringing material to the freezer is no longer an issue.
I, I understand, Mr. Pettit. All I'm saying is, whether it stays or goes, whether we have an agreement or doesn't have an agreement, is really, to some degree...
No, it's not for the board, but we're asking you to remove it, or...
That's correct.
So he's, he's saying he doesn't want to remove it?
Right. So what I'm saying is...
I'm giving you the answer to say why you don't want to remove it.
Yeah. And that's why I'm saying we don't want to comply with condition four. Okay. With respect to the remaining conditions or requests, we will comply with all of the remaining...
That's correct.
And let's see if we're reading Mr. Healy's report that dealt with... No, there's no other engineering site plan-related comments. There are comments from some other environmental head comments about replacing the trees, which I think would be addressed. We do have ordinance chapter 222 trees. It talks about tree replacements. You'll have to do those calculations and that'll address their comments.
Yeah, we, we will agree either to replace the trees or in the alternative pay into the fund as permitted by your ordinance.
Yep.
Well, if you, if you plant a street tree in front, that counts as one of them.
Yeah. And, and we may, we may not want to plant trees in the back, because there is a possibility we may be able to acquire the adjoining property and then provide a parking lot in the future.
To put that in here.
So, you know, that's why we may want to not replace them at this time. So that's, you know, for further discussion another day. I have no further questions of this witness.
Thank you.
I suggest we open it to public.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we open the meeting to the public for a hearing on this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public. If anyone wishes to comment, they should come forward.
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen? You want to make a final statement?
Just very briefly. I understood, you know, I understand, Mr. Pettit, some of the board's concerns concerning the issue of parking. My client has, you know, is aware of the issue. We will make sure that all our employees are not gonna be parking in the street to take parking spaces away from our... are not gonna be parking in the street to take parking spaces away from our customers, obviously, that is, that is not in his best interest. I think bringing in a new establishment, especially in a building that's been vacant for a long period of time, will be a benefit to the Kingston neighborhood, and perhaps Mr. Pettit can change where he goes and eats, instead of going to the other place, can show up here every once in a while and eat there, but-
Check for food, why not?
I, I do think it will be an addition to the neighborhood, I think that the, the variances are the minimus in nature as far as the extension, all we're doing is extending the existing building, we will work out all of the logistics of getting everything in and out of that site, and like I said, with a little bit of luck, maybe this will be the start of something a little bit bigger in Kingston, which I think would be also a good thing, and I thank the board for their time and attention.
Any further comments from the board?
Well, speaking as counsel liaison to the Kingston Village Advisory Committee, I also think this will be a, a good addition to Kingston, it, it would be really of greater local use than a gift shop, I think, but, and generally a stimulus to, to Kingston business.
entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the application with the conditions that have been agreed to, and not including the condition, the one condition, I think item four of the engineer's report that where a waiver was requested, I would move the application with, with that waiver.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Did you pull the board, Mr. Healy?
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Robert La Court?
Yes.
Robert Metler?
Yes.
Carl Houck?
Yes.
Charles Oniaka?
Yes.
And acting chairman, James Pettit?
Yes.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, just one-
Wait, I was just gonna ask you what further, one small thing.
It'll take 30 seconds.
Okay.
Literally a minute if we don't, 30 seconds, a minute if we have questions.
I'll cross my legs.
Real quick, I just wanted to make the board aware that there were new co-rules that were released late last week in response to New Jersey Supreme Court mandate that they do so prior to May 1st. Overall, it, it moves the planning period out another six years, we were originally, when we submitted a few years ago, it was for 2018, now, because of the delay, they've moved it out to 224, 2024. By moving it out a few more years, the base obligation has increased somewhat, I don't want to get into any specific numbers at this point, although there were numbers, there, there's a number of different things that we're gonna be looking at over the next few weeks and months, obviously digesting the rules, digesting the numbers that we've been given, looking at how different caps and reductions and bonuses and things like that, that, well, actually, there aren't bonuses, but caps and reductions that are in there, and seeing how that, how these new rules may apply to Franklin. The timing of it, they're going to be officially released by the New Jersey Register June 2nd, 60-day comment period, Ted and I, the last time around, we went through the rules, each of us, and had a number of comments, we'll be doing the same thing this time around. And then, at least as of right now, they're looking at an August 3rd adoption, and theoretically, after that, we'd have to do a plan. Chances are, it's gonna go through the same go-around that we've seen over and over again, both the housing side, advocate side, and the environmentalists aren't very happy, so we may be going through the same song and dance, but nonetheless, we'll be evaluating it and developing a strategy on how to best position the township. That's it.
Anything else? Move for enjoyment?
I'll make a motion.
Searcas? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Good job.
Your turn.